I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh...
Judge, Judge.
Next on your agenda is Judge Moak for corrections and corrections.
First. So I had a scare after Sunday and I wasn't feeling well, so I'm wearing my mask if it's alright. Julie is here. Amber was on her way. She went to the courthouse. But I'll get started. And if we have questions, that's something, I'm gonna turn around and go like this. So, alright. So I am coming to the council for support. I am... I wish to consolidate my probation department with community corrections. And in order to do this, I have the power to appoint people as probation officers, but I need a partnership with the council because there will be some fiscal impact and I need to get all that out on the table here. I have met with Ray and talked with him a little bit. I sent out some literature that... Oh, not literature. It's an outline that I'm gonna be following today and I hope that you receive it. If you haven't had a chance to read through it all, that's what I'm gonna be going through today. And I think that this is a real opportunity for us to exponentially increase the services that we are providing to people who are in our community and are serving sentences. And so, I wanna give you a little bit of background. So when a judge sentences somebody in Indiana, they essentially have two options: incarceration or community supervision. Prison is for major felonies. So a person goes to prison and they're offered programming within the confines of the correction facility that they're serving their sentence at. And that can include things like cognitive behavioral therapy, it can include drug treatment, life skills training. The Madison Women's Prison offers an excellent trade program. There's a welding program that I'm sure you've all heard of. Jail is for lower-level felonies and for misdemeanors. And unfortunately, in most counties, and we're one of them, there are very little services that we can offer people who are serving sentences in our jail. Statewide, that's a statewide problem. The other option, so the one option is incarceration. The other option is community supervision. And this is an alternative to incarceration. And offenders remain within the community and they're supervised by the court system. They can live at home, they can work, they can pay taxes, they can go to basketball games and support their families. And overall, the idea is that they're closer to home and they can continue to contribute to our communities. The good thing about community service or community supervision is that there's a lot more programming that's available for them. There's more therapy options, there are more drug treatment options, there's more life skills training available, there's help with employment and education. So, um... The two structures that we have for community supervision in our county are probation and community corrections. And there's a difference between the two, and I'll just talk about that now. Probation is a judicial creature. It is created for the judges, it's for the courts, it's from within the court system, and it's created by authority of the Supreme Court of Indiana and ultimately our constitution. It's a direct extension of the judge. So when somebody is on probation, I tell people, "You're talking to a probation officer, you're talking to me." Because that probation officer is simply an extension of the courtroom and of the judge. The probation department and the probation officers are supervised by the judge. They, um... They have a unique and, what we call it, a special relationship with the judge. It's different than any other type of employee-employer relationship because they're an extension of the judicial system. They have rules that apply to them that don't apply to other community supervision agents or any other county employees. They're paid by the county, but they answer directly to the judge. The judge does hiring, firing under the statutes, the applicable case laws. The judge is responsible for hiring, firing, and discipline because of this special relationship that the judge has with the probation officer. There is a confidentiality, a privilege between the two, and the probation officer has to follow the Code of Judicial Conduct, which are the rules of ethics that apply to judges and judges alone and judges' employees like probation officers and court staff. So, they have immunity. And that immunity is necessary for the administration of justice. It's essentially what the Seventh Circuit has said in the United States federal system. They have statutory duties. So there are things that they are statutorily required to do. I put a list in there, this is not exhaustive, but they are required to do pre-sentence investigations. So if somebody is sentenced to prison, the court has to have a pre-sentence investigation before that sentencing can be completed. And the pre-sentence investigation is risk assessment and an interview and background and those sorts of things, so the judge has an understanding of who the person is before a sentence is imposed. They're required to supervise people as ordered by the court, so they have people on probation that they supervise. They are required to notify the court if there's a violation of that supervision. They can make recommendations to the court. And they also handle transfers of probation, both interstate or to another state or intrastate to another county. Probation is designed for moderate-risk offenders and misdemeanors. Low to moderate-risk felonies. And it is a less restrictive supervision environment. You're gonna see a lot of over... I'm gonna talk about a lot of overlap between community corrections and probation, but probation... The probation department has case management. They meet with their probationers. They can do drug testing. They can do field checks, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in detail. Sometimes they can impose electronic monitoring. They have counseling options, they do have therapy options, and they do have services that they can apply. What's important here for the council to know is that there are workload standards that are imposed on every probation officer. And these are statewide. They're imposed by the Supreme Court using what's called the Indiana's probation case classification and workload measure system. So if you're familiar with, for example, workloads on public defenders, they have a point system that they use and public defenders can only be assigned a certain number of cases in a given period. And, you know, every month, those cases can fall off and they can get appointments, but there are women that's on there. Well, there's a similar restriction that's imposed on our probation department. If you look at... There's the attachment one in the back, which is page six. I've gone through the workload calculations. I'll talk more about it here in a little bit. I didn't wanna overload everybody because it is getting down in the weeds, but I'll talk more about the calculations and where we are and what that means for our county. Community Corrections is an executive agency. It is an extension of the Department of Correction which answers ultimately to the government, so it's from the executive side of our government. It has a director and an advisory board. I think some of you had experience on the advisory board in some fashion or another. The director answers to the board, not the courts, not the judges. They are county employees, but they are funded through grants and user fees. And they cannot... Community Corrections employees cannot perform the same things that probation department or probation officers do because they're not granted that statutory authority to do those things. They can perform community supervision. Courts... Uh, Community Corrections is designed for high-risk offenders or very high-risk, and these are people who are not good candidates for our probation department. It is a more restrictive supervision as compared to probation. The options are there for them to increase or reduce supervision between case management, electronic monitoring, work placement, and those sorts of things. And because they're higher risk, there are more interventions available for these people. And again, just as these services are available to many of our probationers, this is an expanded, an expansion of services, including cognitive behavioral therapy, individual and group therapy, drug treatment, life skills training, and home business. But having two different agencies that are essentially doing the same function, in other words, supervising the people who are in our community, is very efficient. They have different guidelines, different standards, they have different certifications, training, different policies and procedures. And, um... These are all two agencies that are really responsible for watching it over people that we've given, that we've diverted from prison and are keeping in our community. So, um... The other thing is that we've got a difference in quality assurance. Again, I'm gonna get into this more, but we have four probation officers. One of our probation officers is our chief probation officer, and she is responsible for, among other things, quality assurance. So pulling random files, sitting down with employees and going over a particular case to see how things are going, to see if they are reading their quality-assured standards. And frankly, it's just not something that our probation department is able to do because of the volume of cases that they have. The other problem is that they have different access to the supervised release system, which is the case management system that both agencies have access to. This case management system was developed within the inside program. It connects to risk assessments, pre-sentence investigations, abstracts of judgments, which are summaries of judgments or sentencings, and other inside applications. But most importantly, it interfaces with Odyssey. And I know, you know, you're familiar with Odyssey. That's the system that the state is providing for us in place of the CSI, JTS program. And because SRS interfaces with Odyssey, our caseworkers, if they have the appropriate credentials, can access things like case chronology summaries, hearing information, records, actual documents. And the problem is that they don't... Community Corrections and probation don't have the same credentials or access. So they can't see what one another is doing. So if you have somebody who's on Community Corrections, who has been on probation or may already be on probation, these two supervisors can't see what the other's doing and they can't see how the person is doing on supervision. And it's an incredible inefficiency because then it requires the caseworker to call the probation officer. And imagine when you're at work and you've got 100 other things to do, and then someone calls and says, "Hey, how is Mr. Smith doing? I need to sit down and have a conversation with you that's gonna take 15 or 20 minutes because I can't access your notes," which would be really nice, but I can't. And so you're taking that probation officer, that caseworker away from what they're doing because they're answering questions that could easily be obtained using the SRS system. Unification would fix that. So our current structure is four probation officers, including one chief. We have two adults and two juvenile probation officers. The adult POs are assigned by court. Julie is assigned to Circuit Court. Noah Gooton is assigned to Superior Court. They're both responsible for pre-sentence investigations in their respective courts. Julie also handles transfers, intra and interstate, and again, Julie also does administration. Noah also works with the schools and he also works with our Victim Impact Panel, which is a program developed through Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And it's a meeting where people can come and learn about the impact that drunk driving has on communities. Here's what's important. Julie has 128 total cases. Noah has 243 cases. And looking at the workload measurements, there are 136 points or hours in a week available to each probation officer. Long story short, Julie is doing 151 and a half points over the accepted workload according to the Judicial Conference requirements. And Noah is doing 275 and a half points over the accepted workload requirements. Meaning Noah is almost doing the work of four probation officers. He's doing himself and 275, which is almost three. Julie is doing one and a half times. She's doing the work of two, almost three probation officers. And again, these are according to the case management numbers that are put down, given to us by the state. So, the total people on probation are roughly 371 people that are supervised by two probation officers right now. We are not in compliance with state standards. And in order to get into compliance, we would need at least three fully-funded new probation officers. Community Corrections, again, the advisory board and the director, they have eight caseworkers. And they're also handling 370 people, 370 cases. So Community Corrections has eight people handling 370 people. And probation is two people, two caseworkers handling an additional 370 people. And just logically, the numbers there, probation isn't entirely understaffed. Community Corrections also has two pre-trial release caseworkers and they're supervising roughly 200 people at any given time. And as I said, in order for us to get into compliance with state standards, we... I can ask for at least three fully-funded probation officers. The other option that I see is a very viable alternative is to consolidate probation with Community Corrections. If we do this, um... There will be some structural changes. And I've attached a structure and I put it in my outline. If you look at the last page, I put my proposed structure on there. And in, on page four, I talk about the adult probation and having Amber as chief and the juvenile probation department having Julie as chief. I just got off the phone with the Indiana Office of Court Services today. They told me that my proposed structure would not be in compliance with administrative rules, so I have to rework the structure. But it doesn't change my request and it doesn't change my effort here to get these two programs unified. It just means that I have to come up with a different structure. But my hope is that with your support and your approval, I can increase the number of probation officers to 12 and bring us more in line with state regulations. The other thing that I want to do, I want to convert Noah to a juvenile probation officer. Because we have two juvenile probation officers that are responsible for the entire county. I want to improve our presence in the schools. I want to improve our relationship with the communities on the juvenile side. And I think we have Michael and Jenny do a great job, but they're two. And I think we can increase our presence in the schools and that will help us get to problems sooner. And we can help get services in place sooner and we can work on keeping these kids out of the system altogether. And that's very important to me, and I know it's important to you all. By converting Noah to a third juvenile probation officer, we can dedicate more of our services that we're offering to our schools. With a unified system, we'd have a single entry point for every person who's gonna be on community supervision. There'd be uniformity in services. We would have the same standards, the same procedures, the same policies that would apply. We would have an increaseability in implementing quality assurance because Community Corrections has the staffing available to do those random polls on those files, sit down with the caseworkers and see what kind of work they're doing and see if there's room for improvement, see what they're doing right and see where we can improve. The other thing is with a unified system, we can take advantage of Community Corrections' home visits. They have a dedicated officer who is able to go out and... His job is to go out and visit people who are on supervision. I feel very passionate about our probation department being out in our community. When I sat down with Julie early on, I told her, "Look, you know, at some point, I want to send these canary yellow jackets that say 'probation' and I want the community to see us out there working with these people and know that we are out there because there are safety concerns and we wanna make sure that people are in compliance and abiding by the court orders that they're required to abide by because they're living amongst us and within our community. And we wanna see and make sure that our services are working." It's just not something that we're able to do right now on the probation side because they're underwater. They're just, they're underwater. So... On page five, I talk about the fiscal consequences. And this is where, you know, I was very careful to make sure that this was understood when I had the opportunity to meet with the president. And what's important here is that probation officer salaries, as you probably know, are tied to a statute. And we don't get to say what those raises are. That the statute itself says that probation officers are being paid in accordance to a schedule that's dictated by the Judicial Conference, which is the same agency that creates the workload measurements. So, if by appointing Community Corrections caseworkers probation officers, I am marrying their salaries to this statutory salary schedule. And their salaries will go up. Now, I'm working with Julie and Amber and I've spoken with the Department of Correction and have confirmed that if I convert Community Corrections caseworkers to probation officers, we will still continue to receive grant funding and we will still be eligible to fund salaries using user fees. And that's important because the increase that is going to happen, if this is approved, can be funded by project income, which are user fees and probation user fees. So we can absorb the initial sting, as it were, of getting these caseworkers' salaries up to the probation department's statutory standards. We can absorb that with money without cost to the county. Future increases, we can mitigate those with project income and probation user fees. To be clear, at some point in the future, it may be that the council would be asked to help out with additional increases. I don't know what that future looks like. I just know for the immediate future, we can absorb the cost to the county without calling on the council to fund this increase. The big thing is that we will need to offer these new probation officers benefits. And that's primarily, that's the other primary concern here. With unification, there'll be a total of 19 Community Corrections employees. That includes caseworkers, support staff, director. And if benefits are $8,356.92, times 19 is $150,424.56. In speaking with Amber, I know that she does have some funding available that we can use to apply towards this. My hope is that I can get approval from you to do this and we can implement this program. There are some time frames. From the point that a person is appointed as a probation officer, they have six months to take a mandatory probation test and they have one year to complete orientation before they are fully approved. But that is my request to you today. I'm gonna have to answer questions. I'll try to answer questions as best I can.
I got some.
Yes, sir.
Is there any plans to work with school counselors? I don't think there's any truancy officers in Jefferson County, are there?
They're not dedicated truancy officers. They have SROs, School Resource Officers, that kind of work as truancy officers.
So, and then my third one was, are we gonna coordinate not only with the school counselors and truancy officers, but the school resource officers? Are we gonna... Are they gonna be in the mix sometime?
Yes. And let me say this. One of the things that I am confident will happen here is that by freeing up time with unification, we're gonna be able to apply more time, more manpower to our juvenile cases. And that's going to allow us more opportunity to collaborate with school resource officers, with school counselors, and increase our presence in the schools. So the answer is yes. There are further grant, there is further grant funding that's available for juveniles. I talked with the Court Services Director in Ripley County. They are looking to get an additional probation officer that's fully funded by a $50,000 grant. And on top of that, there's another $50,000 grant, for example, that's available for programming. So they're using that money to have cookouts and invite kids to come out, kind of be a part of programming and get out of the community. So those are the two options.
That was hoping my other point was that, um... If you incorporate the school counselors, the truancy officers, and the school resource officers, there should be additional grant funding, but who would apply for those?
That's a good question. I would think that one of my probation officers would be able to apply for that. What I also wanna say is, we have been running the Attend and Engage Program, which doesn't involve the older kids, it's the younger kids. That is addressing, so if kids miss a certain number of days, we have a system set up where notification goes out to the parents from the probation department. "Hey, are there services that we can offer?" If they continue to miss, we're getting our own home-based caseworkers involved on a voluntary basis. If we're still getting missed days, the case is referred to the Department of Child Services. And it goes that route, or it can go, on the juvenile side, it can go to a status offense type. But usually with the younger kids, that's not something that we've been doing. But we have been working on getting more involvement with the Department of Child Services at that level. On the, on the, the older kids, it's less a concern that the parent, you know, older kids can get to school, younger kids can't get to school. So the younger kids, we're looking more at the parents to try and understand more about what's going on in the home. The older kids, we're looking more at the kids themselves. And we'll tell you that up in Ripley County, they have a program where instead of, you know, instead of going, if they're suspended, instead of going home and playing Xbox all day, they go to programming in the mornings and they do community service work in the afternoons. So the kids don't really wanna be suspended. And I know that that's something that Madison Schools is either working on or in the process of, or already has something similar to that, but that's something that I want to expand.
And one last thing, on the younger kids that you're talking about, that should be, should fall on the parents, and the parents should be held accountable, right?
I think that when you're talking about younger kids who can't get to school themselves, there is more of a focus on parents.
And it should, it could possibly fall under neglect.
It possibly could.
Child neglect.
There are two types. There's misdemeanor neglect in that regard, educational, misdemeanor educational neglect, which is a per se, "You've missed these number of days." There's also a felony neglect where it requires a little bit more in terms of understanding what's going on. But the objective, again, particularly with AEP, is to understand what's keeping, what are the barriers, what are keeping the kids out, keeping the kids from school? What are getting in the way of parents getting kids to school? Sometimes, sadly, it's a drug issue. Sometimes though, it's, "I can't, I don't have transportation." And AEP is a program that is designed to address what those barriers are and try to get the kids back into school.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do think, just when you mentioned grants, I'm looking at a great grant fight sitting right behind you, that I think that would be a blessing. The departments are collaborating in the fact that Community Corrections has vast experience in successfully writing grants. So that could be a blessing, obviously, to your current probation staff. Grants seem easy, but I've written them, they're not always easy to write and you have to have staff to manage them. But the fact that they bring a lot of grant experience. And those dollars have been a blessing to our county. I think that would be an added benefit. And I, you know, it's the first thing that popped in my head with the resource officers too, is just, I think people are so critical to see what we don't have. Obviously, we've already heard, um, you have amazing programming that's already in place. Um, and I'm, I'm in favor of the efficiency and the collaboration, you know, but ten years ago, we did not have full, four full-time uh, resource officers, and this county now has four, or three with Madison and one at Southwestern. That's a blessing.
Right.
They probably could use more, but it's a big blessing.
And that highlights another thing, and, and this is something I talked with, um, with Councilor Don, Donnie, about, and that is, when you look at, um, if you look at attached to, that shows the possession of methamphetamine. I just used that as an example, and the increase that we're seeing from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-one, or cases filed. Fifty in two thousand twelve, we're up to two hundred fifty-seven in two thousand twenty-one. Those are pretty recent numbers. We've increased our sheriff's department, we've increased our judges, we have, we have a third judge now. You've been gracious enough to give me an additional staff person, so we're increasing court staff. We've increased our police department, we've increased, um, Community Corrections continues to grow. And they're, we're growing because we're dealing with this increasingly difficult problem of methamphetamine. And one area that we have not increased, and we have not looked at, and who needs help, is that's, is my probation department.
Um, one question I might have is, um, when you angled this a different direction, um, Amber, um, Mrs. Chief, or Julie, whatever, however you restructure this, do you feel that you will get an approval?
From?
From, you know, when you submit your approval for structuring purposes?
Yes. In talking with IOCS, they said, uh, you have to, instead of having two separate departments, you gotta have one, and you can have separate divisions. It's, it's a, it's, it's an administrative fix.
Okay, so, 'cause I was looking at your flow chart back here. So, okay. Do you think, just a little bit of tweaking?
Yes.
Okay, just job titles, or?
Well, yeah, job titles, responsibilities. Um, and, and for what it's worth, if you're interested in the administrative rule eighteen, that's, that's the rule that is, uh, employed.
Okay. I have a question. I mean, we, there are different locations. You have probation officers in one location, you have the correct, uh, Community Corrections in another location.
Correct.
Can that be tied in, like, do their computer, their computers can, are they tied in now, or can they be tied in so that they would be able to get this information that you talked about?
So my understanding, Odyssey is a web-based program, I believe SRS is a web-based pro, pro, program. So if you have access to the internet and you have the proper credentials, yes.
Credentials, you could, I mean, it would be, you could pick it up either place. Is that correct? Okay, that would be great. That would be my worry, you know, because we are scattered, you know, a little bit in that direction.
Yes.
And with that being web-based, is there, is it accessible on all computers, or is there a license per computer? Because we always run into that with different aspects, so just.
I know that with, I don't know the answer to that.
You can log in from here.
You can log in anywhere, as long as you have the login.
Just didn't want to get surprised at, I mean, eight more licenses.
And they're probably in the field sometimes, I'm, I'm sure.
And that's totally secure, so that, you know, just not anyone can, can get into that, have certain credentials to be able, and to log in. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Username and password, and then the, uh, core technology, I'm trying to think of it. They would, they, they dictate who has what, what type of access.
We have the same program, we just don't have access to each other's notes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, yes, that's what I'm asking. And I'm gonna say, if this is going down, that you're gonna have to be, add the access to each other's notes, so.
So what they would, what the SRS people will, will have to do is just combine our pro, our two departments together, where we have access to, to the other cases.
Thinking outside the box again.
We appreciate all the, it's more than just a, maybe we could do this, and I know I appreciate Ray calling and, and filling me in on, um, everything that you, we're gonna present tonight, and obviously, having this had its own degree myself, well, I don't have any other questions.
And I know Amber's here, is this, is this, are you totally on board with this, this type of thing, and, and everything, doing it, going forward? It will help you guys and so forth?
Yeah, provide services that are needed to the community, so, yes.
I'll also say that thirty counties already are unified in one way or another. Washington, Washington County is the most recent county, and I've been talking with some of the people that are involved with how they are doing it. Um, and they've been a really great resource. I, I, I will say this again, I've repeated myself, but I think that at some point, I think the state is gonna mandate this down the road. I want to be ahead of it. Um, you know, setting aside the concerns that I have, that the probation department is undermanned and are understaffed, and, and the numbers are, are, um, are very, uh, intensive their caseload.
I got final one. Did you say that, final? Finding the money.
I'll make a motion to move forward with this, uh, proposal by Judge Moke. Uh, cover the benefits of, uh, the consolidation of, uh, the two, uh, groups.
I'll second that.
Close in favor? What's a realistic timeline?
Realistic timeline?
We're just waiting for the SRS. I mean, that's really, I mean, I think we can go ahead and, and, you know, on paper, do what we need to do, and then just gradually start as we, as we can.
I can advertise.
Yeah, as we get, yeah.
Amber and I have been.
Which I think, uh, benefits for all employees are currently already budgeted.
Well, I don't have enough, I wasn't granted enough money. So I need a hundred and fifty-some thousand, and I only have fifty-four, so I can contribute fifty-four thousand for this year. Yeah, so I can contribute fifty-four thousand to the pot, um, but I was still, I was just still short.
So, we would need to advertise wherever we chose to pay that from, if we're gonna pay for their benefits out of County General at the end for, of the year.
If it's ju, is it just insur, is it just insurance that we're, that we're, no, we have to pick up difference? And, and everything, I think that'd have to come out of County General, because that's where the insurance is coming out of now.
Does anybody know what was appropriate for the, uh, current, uh, probation benefits?
Current line item right now for insurance? Well, it's everyone's insurance.
It's everyone's insurance.
It's everyone's altogether, so it's that one million, I think it's like one point three million.
It's actually there.
Right, so, well, I would.
At the end of the year, I'm gonna have to.
You may have to add to it.
Right, just wait until the end of the year to add to it.
Yeah.
But once they are ready, then we can switch that over to County General.
I was gonna say, I'm thinking.
So, a, a rough guess, but maybe only seventy-five thousand, uh, it would, we would be contributing, because.
It really may not be an actual cost, because we're talking, what, eight employees, or how many employees total? Nineteen employees. I can think of several employees that do not even take insurance, but we budget for them.
But we are hit budgeted for.
We have already budgeted for them, so I would say.
So maybe just wait.
We would wait until, like, soon.
I was saying, yeah, that one, I was usually pretty happy at the end of the year, like, moving around.
We can see where we are. Yeah, I, I don't think you need to, to do it now, because I think it's there.
Yeah.
Between now and then, if people come on, insurance go off, insurance.
Have insurance, and some don't take it, and which we have budgeted for, you know, so.
Right.
Does everyone, Amber, at, at your group, do have insurance, do you take the insurance, or do you not?
Uh, not everybody does, not all.
Takes insurance, so there'd be some that wouldn't even take the insurance, is that what you're saying? Was, was it that direction? So I think we need, unlike Ray, I think we need to wait till, you know, down the road, and know whether we need, if, if even have to have it as an extra, um, you know, amount, you can watch that, and if it does, well, then we can advertise it for it.
Okay, and we may be able to transfer out another line by then.
By then, out of County, right, but then that, but it needs, it needs County General, yeah.
Julie, is there something else you wanted to add on kind one?
No, I was just saying, Amber and I have been working on this, and, and we thought one, one time, one date for the courts to begin sending all new adult cases to Community Corrections for supervision, and then, oh, I don't know, as, through the year, we would start transferring all of our current cases over to Community Corrections. So it's gonna be a, kind of a progressive change, as opposed to all at once, because that would be a lot for them to take on all at once. Um, we hope to have it all done by the time at least the school year starts, because Noah will then be fully dedicated to an adult, as a juvenile, and wants to be in the schools, you know, a lot, so it would be hard for him to handle both. Adult and juvenile, it's just, it's just.
And the extra training that you talked about, everything, that would, you, that would just be going along as you, as you get.
Yeah, we, we got that. We're ready to go. I mean, we're just waiting for SRS, really.
Okay.
And this.
And you, you have to resubmit your.
No, I don't have one.
Okay, I mean, but your intention, obviously, is to get that done.
Yes.
Just to spot down.
Yes.
I think in the, in the long run, it will, it will benefit the community in terms of that.
It's gonna change the landscape, it really is.
And, and, you know, I really just think it'll work, work.
Yeah, I was just, you know, in case others ask us, if, um, when it's resubmitted, if we, um, get, as soon as you hear approval, um, would you choose an amount to?
Absolutely. I'll choose her, with him, and.
Yeah, get the information back, you know, I, I.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the work.
Take good work.
And next week, uh, Suzie Morris?
Hello, everyone. I'm asking for money to be transferred from the state nine-one-one funds, approximately twenty-nine, thirty-four thousand dollars to a twelve-twenty-two line item to, uh, purchase our old, I don't know, older than, what do I have? Leave this world. It's, no money comes out of the, the county, and it's all from state funds. And I have my radio vendor in the first of the year, and these radios will, um, kind of coincide with the new console system that we're having. But, and so.
So, question, um, this looks like, I mean, some of them, we would, that would have been budgeted last year for this year, you know, when the budget came along. Um, I, I understand how the nine-one-one works, and that, but it would be nice to have everything budgeted. We knew last year that these radios were fourteen years old, and they were gonna be fifteen this year. So it should have been in the twenty-twenty-two budget as a line item for the replacement.
I, you're right. There's a lot going on, and we had the, our old vendor that I could, that would never come down, Jay and Kay, they just sort of abandoned us, and I had to go with this new vendor, and I could do with him until the first year, but then.
Uh, you didn't go till November, was it something in November?
No, it was actually December, or January first.
This first quote here is dated November fifteenth.
So, um, but I, you know, I wasn't able to get the regular people down, because they just sort of left us. And there'd been a lot going on, too, so, my apologies, we're not adding it to, but I needed to add it to, but.
Added it when we were at, we made the new line item, and, and had all those items.
Right.
How come, that, I, I'm like you, Chris, there was a, it was eleven, the last quote that you sent us was eleven fifteen, and that was from Advanced Radio Communications, and then you had a, a quote from the other, uh, company. Are they compatible? Are they oranges to oranges, or, that, I mean, the two co, the two amounts?
No, the, the, our radio vendor, who is now, who is the JDS and Sons, are the one that's going to install our new radio consoles. My thinking is we stay with the same people, even though ARC is about five, six thousand dollars cheaper, because these people that we have as a vendor will be servicing the radios that we buy to go in with the, uh, consoles.
How bad are any of those radios?
Um, we're down two, and what I mean down two is they had to take parts of two and rig the other ones up to work. So we're kind of short two, but they made some work. So, I'm not real technical, I, I mean, I watch them do it, but they're robbing Peter to pay Paul and fix some of these radios.
This is an immediate problem for your department.
An immediate?
Yeah.
It's, it's been an ongoing problem on and off. Uh, it's just as the radios get older, from my understanding, the programming is a little bit different on, they call P twenty-five, and I'm not exactly, like, I'm not IT people, but they have newer radios coming out, and the ones that we have are old.
I know, I know, when I first read the email, I think I printed a copy here when I got here today, it was about a seven thousand dollar difference, and I glanced and thought, I don't see in either quote, um, follow-up tech support, um, testing support, as you mentioned, that JDS would, would do. Um, I mean, is that pretty standard? What, is the Advanced Radio Communications, they would not provide that?
No, they would use, they would do on their radios, but their interaction with their radios to our consoles, they, it'd be easier to program the radios from one company that's, that's, that's manufacturing the radio console. They're gonna integrate, and like I said, I'm not real familiar, but, uh, ARC would, if we bought the radios from them, I mean, they would service the radios, but then we also have a contract with JDS and Sons that they maintain radios and the consoles.
So you have the contractors place?
Yes.
Yeah, with the consoles, with the, yeah, with the consoles, with the, yeah, with the debt, but yeah.
And they suggested, too, that the, uh, when I talked to Mr. Shipley, it's been two, three weeks ago, that when it's best to get the consoles in and working before the radios are replaced. And, and some technical stuff.
And make sure, and then they can, they can. Put them back together.
Right.
So these fifteen, you're, you're saying fif, you're needing, did I read that right, fifteen? No, they're fifteen years old. So how many total, what's this?
There is.
How many is that, somebody?
Six.
Six? No, seven.
Thirteen. Oh, wait a minute.
Quantity is what, here's six, six.
I think there's fifteen, fifteen radios.
Okay. But you, I, because the one, the quote over here is like, I think thirteen. Nineteen, that'd be nineteen.
I'm counting fourteen radios. Six of the seven hundred, uh, six of the TM ninety-three hundred BHF, and two of the TM ninety-three hundred UHF. Rest of batteries.
Okay.
But, I.
Sorry, what did you say, Amber?
That's the number, we have a.
Right, right, that's, that's, that's what I was asking, to be sure.
Thirteen, I'm wondering fourteen, I'm the other, but that must be. Obviously, whichever company is chosen, they have to move forward with this. Um, I want to make sure they're quoting the number that we need, um, not above or below.
Right.
Mr. President?
We might be able to use the ARP money for, for this, it's public safety. So we talked about certain sites and money for nine-one-one, so.
I think the money's already there.
I think the money would be available.
The concern was it not being budgeted.
Yeah, it just was not budgeted. I mean, the money's there, I, you know, the money would be there in the nine-one-one fund. Yeah, it's coming from state, it's coming from state.
State, you shouldn't let go of it from last year.
Yeah, was it that, that you did not use all the money that was, that you had budgeted last year, or is that what? At one time, I saw somewhere that, in an email, or something back and forth, that Heather had sent. But I know it went back to the, to the nine-one-one fund, to the one-two-two-two, uh, and everything, so.
Right, and, and you guys allowed to use a big chunk of that for the three big projects for this year.
Yes, projects that we had, yeah.
And there's still money left over for young such as this.
Because I think her fund, her fund right to date, I'm, I'm looking here.
I understand Chris's concern.
Four hundred, four hundred and seventy-four thousand is in that, four hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and two dollars and forty-eight cents. And there's what, about twenty-six thousand comes in?
Twenty-six, four forty-eight each month.
Comes in each month.
And then at the end of the year, and it's not a guaranteed figure, like this, uh, last year, we got sixty-some thousand, and the year before, we got ninety-some thousand extra.
Because that, the state depending at the end of the year, on that state.
I understand your concern, Chris, about the budget cycle, but to me, this is a vital part of your department. Well, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but the problem is, we're all busy, no matter where we're at in work. And if, if we'd have just have been given a heads up, hey, I can't get the vendor in here, but first part of next year, I want to have this expense. That's what ends up, is communication.
For every department.
For every department, every department.
Every year, and this is my fifth year, I don't know about six, but.
Uh, but every department, it's not, it's just not your department, it's every department needs to think that, gotta do.
I think we're blessed and lucky that the state funding is.
Yes.
Still there available because of what, you know, I mean, Sheriff may budget for one car next year because he thinks he needs one new car, but if, you know, something catastrophic happens and oh my gosh, now I have to replace three, that's when you really have to, um, dig deep and figure out how, yeah. So, but to at least budget, no, okay, we're at least planning for one, and another radios were fourteen years old, yeah, just thinking through, obviously, any corporate expenses, capital expenses, so to speak, as far as equipment and what you might need, um, just so we can have it, um, during budgeting cycle is helpful.
I encourage all departments to look at the equipment that they have, whether it's copiers or whatever, figure out where they're at in their lifespan and have that item documented and when it's gonna go out of rotation, so that it is put into budgets. Like Heather said, in this case, we're fortunate, the nine one one funds are there. That's not always the case, so.
Very much so.
That's why it's important to, to budget.
Now, this has to be advertised, Heather?
Yes, I will have to advertise it, um, and then you would be able to vote on it next month.
I don't, I have the next, next meeting. And other than that, I'd just like to say to your, pass on to the dispatchers, I do think they did a terrific job during the storm and the ice storm and that stuff and the things that made you available. I did hear you several times, you know, I, I didn't carry a pager on him and I did hear it several times, and so I thought, you're here too, I know there's a lot and, and what really, the very first day, I was thinking, out of the sheets, that morning on Wednesday, there was a bar. Or, I mean, that Thursday morning, there was a Thursday morning event, there was a fire, and that was, you know, to me, I mean, I happen to know who the fire, where the fire was and so forth, and it just, uh, was a devastating fire, you know, the families and so forth, but it, they got help and you needed to help from other people and you kept running, you were right on top of it. Your dispatchers and stuff were right on top of it.
I'll pass that along. I'm very proud of them. They chipped in, they're all tired from working, they are still short, but they're good dispatchers, they know what they're doing, and I'm really proud to have them, so.
I think they, you know, they, they've gone beyond, just the same as the county highway and many others, that, those days, you know, that, that they, everybody, the county came together, but when you have ice, you're dealing with something else entirely.
I almost didn't make it home. It took me an hour and twenty minutes. I only live ten miles out.
Oh, I know.
I know.
She didn't take my call. She didn't take my call one time. I was like, what are you doing on the phone?
Yeah, well, she had, when we had our E M, uh, E M A, emergency meeting that morning, she said, there will be four of us here, I'm gonna be the fourth one, and I, I thought, that's good, that's good, that we, I am so glad that we have a, uh, someone that got that many dispatch, you know.
We got that role, I bet. Thank you all very much.
Can I ask one quick question?
Thank you.
Uh, even if you choose and, and, um, make that decision that it would be wise because of the, um, not radio, but the, um.
Console.
Console services, to go with even the additional seven thousand with the J S quote, really their, their quote in full does not match you requested thirty-four, four, one, two.
I know, I, I put, I put a little note on there, and I know you all don't like this because you like it to the T, but put just a little extra just in case. You never know what's gonna pop up. I can understand if you go back to the twenty-nine thousand, that's, but I, I like to. I don't need the thirty-four, but that would save me if something were to pop up and like I said, I don't know.
This quote is, I mean, really, we're past the thirty-day mark, so we're assuming that one is still.
You check with them and they, it is still.
It's still good.
And parts are very hard to get.
Yeah, they, they have people waiting in line for different things.
Next month?
Yes, next month.
Well, well, well. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Can the, uh, can the old ones be sold or?
No, because everybody's going to the new P twenty-fives, they're like ancient, they're like. You know, it's getting to the scrapyard.
Yeah, fire companies are the same way. I mean, they are not good anymore.
I don't know, probably four, five months.
We wanna talk about windows first or remodel?
You're in charge.
Okay, well, we'll talk about windows first. As you guys know. We replaced the windows on the north side of the building. You wanna take one and just pass it around, and you guys can take one and pass it around. But the rest of the, uh, windows in the building desperately need to be replaced also, and there's eighteen remaining windows. Um. I had the person that put the windows in on the north side give me a quote, he brought it, and you guys, uh, wanted a second, or wanted a couple more quotes, so I called another company, I actually called two more companies, but I was only able to get one more quote, so. The, uh, first quote on top is the gentleman that sold ones on the north side.
I was just getting proud of him.
Um, so that's to replace them on the north side, so for eighteen more windows, it's sixty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. I had Glass Unlimited give me a quote, and then to, for them to replace eighteen windows is fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twelve, so they were a little less this time. The first time they quoted for the north side, they were a little higher. They made the comment they were able to get the windows a little cheaper this time because there's actually a lot of, I guess, businesses or residents in some damn town using these same kind of windows, so they're able to get a little bit better price because they've been ordering more of them, so.
We went ahead and made the motion to pass it forward, just up to the sixty-four.
Up to, up to this amount, up to this amount, but.
But we have to officially vote on it next time because I forgot to advertise it.
Oh.
Tammy's looking at you like, really?
Uh, really? All right, they waited thirty years. We can wait another month again.
I think the fund is already there and we're just replenishing it, so we could.
It's out of the commissioner's fund. I don't know, the windows are, I don't know.
There already has.
We all, we can do that.
It's already there.
It's not coming out of the health department, the windows are the commissioner's, that courthouse or something.
I think that would be the wise thing.
Because.
We don't want you to wait. We don't want you to wait.
I don't want you to wait, no.
They're coming tomorrow to replace the doors that we ordered last May.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, that would be the, that would be the simplest thing to just replace the money, you know, once, once we vote on it.
And the world that we're in and materials and the way they.
And it changed the price.
And unavailability and availability.
Right, right, yeah.
I think it would be wise of us to do it that way.
So Glass Unlimited's?
Yes, that's my motion is to move forward with, um, the lower bid, which would be.
Jefferson County.
I'll second it.
Okay.
On the table?
You guys, okay, with that.
And you will have, yeah, that will work, that will work.
Because we will be out of general repair money for the year.
And then next month, we can take care of that.
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll talk about. The remodel, which this is, this money is health department money, but it's from the, um, our reimbursement piece for COVID vaccine that we've already received, it had thirty-five thousand. Um, we should be getting another chunk, probably at least sixty thousand dollars within the next couple of months. I just had a meeting with the state department of health just today about that funding, and then that funding will continue to come in as long as we're doing vaccines and boosters, of course, that's all, you know, pretty much everybody's vaccinated now and boosted, that's going to get it, so that funding will trickle down, but we do still have that money coming in. So, as I talked to you a few months ago about just needing to have better utilization of the space at the health department, I have space, I just don't have good utilization of the space. So, um, Bobby has helped me a lot with this and ways to rearrange the office to where we have more space and have space available, um, if we need to take on, uh, any additional roles such as testing, because our testing site grant is just through the end of June with King's Utters. We don't know where that's gonna lead. We haven't received direction from the department of health yet, what testing is gonna look like in July. Um, so this is allowing me to have space to set that up if we need to. So I, we did have four different people come in to give us quotes, and we received three quotes. Um, the top one is Can Do Maintenance, and that total quote is ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. The second quote was from Combs Construction Company, and that total quote is eighty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Yeah, I put the highest on top to scare y'all too. The last one was from T Tom Corporation, and that, his total sum was seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, but he did add some things on the back page, if we want to change some things or not do some things, some additions and deductions. So, like, um, we're going to, where we're moving the, our refrigerators, if any of you've been at the health department, our refrigeration room is the size of a little bitty closet, and we need to move those over to a bigger room. Um, so he, if we delete the new flooring in there, you know, we'll take a thousand dollars out, and, but I think we're gonna pull the carpet up in there and just leave it concrete, that way if the refrigerators ever break down, we, whatever. Yeah, so he's, he's put in some different alterations there. Do you?
I want to point out, if you look down at the, that was completed last.
Oh, yeah, in that alternate number six, that work air purifier, that's already been done, so that would not be an addition at all.
I don't know if I talked to you about, but that's supposed to do ninety-nine, nine percent of airborne and their self-cleaning, so you don't have to run and replace the filters, and that was completed last.
Uh, uh, it was one day last week, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that wouldn't be an addition at all, yeah.
So is that alternate six or alternate seven on this?
Alternate six.
Alternate six.
Yeah. That number, yeah.
It's already, it's already completed.
The number seven, the alternate new H V A C unit, again, if you've been at the health department in our little bitty refrigeration room, we have a little H V A C unit that just controls that room, because that room gets really warm from all of our refrigeration units and freezer units in there. So we had just like a small H V A C, I don't know what you call it.
It's called, I believe, a split system.
Yeah.
It's like a mid to doosy, the air handle is right in there.
It's just right.
Compressor, and that's all it is, is A C, there's no heat to it.
Is that room. Yeah.
And it's probably more feasible to just leave it and let it run its course, but it's ten years old.
Yeah, it's over ten years.
They go ahead and pull it, you know, it may run three months, it may run another thirty years.
Right, right.
You know, cost effectively wise.
And again, it would just be to control the refrigeration room, and those units get really warm, and so if you don't keep that room at a little good, they're just constantly running, so.
So who, who drew up your floor plans?
I did.
That's what I was wondering.
I could that come.
The two of us.
Hey, so between the two of us, I, I don't know. I told Bobby.
So they're, they're, both, both, or all three bids, or four.
Yeah.
Used the floor plans that you all came up with, the traffic flow and.
Contractors came in, they were all taken around, it was all apples to apples.
Okay.
Good.
And, and so with, not, not that I don't trust your traffic plans and all that, traffic flow and all that, keeping that in mind, did they generally like say, this is probably a good plan and?
Yeah.
Good, 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 good.
I told them all they were like my husband and I'm the wife. I'm telling you what I want and you just tell me what I need to do.
So, and another question I have for you, I'm just looking through both of these, they're pretty comparable, the last two quotes that we have for both companies. Both are comparable. I mean, as far as what they're going to do.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, yeah, all three that gave quotes, all four that came to give quotes.
They've all gone through the account before.
Yeah, and told the same thing and what we needed and.
And how, or how available are each one of the quotes to be able to, to, cause I know contractors, you know, they get, they sign you up and, and, and everything, but then they say, well, that might be six months down the road, you don't wanna be six months.
Right.
You know, started pretty soon.
Yeah, they all thought like that they could get started fairly soon, um.
It's all inside work, which is.
It's all inside work.
It's a plus they can work regardless of the weather.
That was my question, because sometimes they'll quote something, they'll say, well, I have somebody in front of you.
It's, I think with all three of them, it's a matter of, uh, supply, you know, it's what they have to order and how soon they can get it, it's just like the windows, so. Um, but there's a few things like the back storage room that I just wanna split into two offices, you know, it's just a matter of a wall being built. It's gonna be kind of a, like playing Tetris, so I'm gonna have to like move stuff to get one room down and then move again to get another room down. Um, I, the clerk's office stores, there are voting machines out there, I really need that storage room back to make things work, and I think Tabitha is working on finding a place to fit those voting machines. Um, but that's gonna be a key part in it, because I, I, to make the moves, I gotta have space to get the moves made, so.
Have some place to store.
Yeah, so.
I'll talk about that in a minute.
And I, I mean, I appreciate the detail in the, in the one quote that actually has the alternate, you know, if you're not naming this, or if you decided you want this. Um, and thanks for letting us know about the, the air purifier that obviously is not now needed. I would certainly say with the expense and using your best judgment, if, for example, this quote is, if this company is used, you know, like I look at the necessary, not necessary paint in like a freezer room, probably not, but like I, I looked at the one that said, oh, the additional almost fifteen hundred for painting, just one wall that's new in the office compared to all, and obviously somebody that's working in an office, of course, um, you wouldn't do that in your home, just paint a new wall, you know, so I just can't imagine.
Again, the wallpaper in that office was the original wallpaper, so it's thirty-plus years old.
Yeah, I would say that used to be.
Yeah.
Did we not get a couple more years out?
We, it's actually in really good shape, you'd be surprised, but, you know, you won't be like, oh, it's almost institutionalized.
Make a iteration out of it like one. Like draw it on display, like there's.
Yeah, I keep that so that, you know.
I'd like somebody to make that for you.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
So the actual, cause there's several quotes here, so what is the actual, what do you think is the line that we need to advertise our, uh?
Um.
What are you actually vying for?
We can add and subtract.
What am I adding and subtracting?
Yeah.
Um, well.
There won't be any more add-ons, so.
So is it? My time's ticking, so I don't know.
Now, I said, you can't leave it till this is done, this is your design.
Um.
I mean, are we talking, you know, like eighty thousand, ninety thousand?
Let's see, that's a deduct, that's a deduct, deduct, deduct. Uh, wallpaper, so yes, we would add the forty-eight sixty, because like Heather said, we want everything to match.
Yeah.
Alternate number six was out, so that, so the most that would be added is fifty-six hundred plus forty-eight hundred, so like that's twelve thousand dollars.
Eighty-six, eighty-seven, it's about the same.
So then you're looking at very comparable costs.
So, yeah, so I would, um, cause we're gonna have to advertise for it, right?
Yes.
And so I guess, I mean, I have the money there, I got a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the state, it was there, so I guess maybe advertise for ninety?
I was gonna say not, I was gonna say advertise for ninety, then it would be curriculier.
Right.
It's gonna change, these are not, they're not in stone, and then you do have to have some changes.
Right, so.
So we have to, so is somebody making a recommendation?
But you say you already, let me, before we make a motion, if you already have that money.
But it hasn't been appropriated.
Okay, has to be appropriated, so we have to appropriate.
So I'll actually be doing an advertisement for sixty-four and change for the glass out of eleven forty for Coombe Courthouse.
Actually, that's fifty-nine, six, twelve is what, yeah, is what the lower quote was.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twelve.
Fifty-nine, six, twelve, that's right. I was looking at the original quote.
Sorry.
Um, so then I will also advertise the ninety thousand then out of the health.
It'll be the health department fund. I don't know what line, I guess building maintenance line item, I have a line item for building maintenance.
And I just have to have the fund.
And I just have to have the fund to advertise it, the advertising item, doesn't matter.
Okay, all right. Do you need me to send you a form for that?
Um, you don't have to, if you wanna go ahead and email me, so that we have that.
I can do that, do that.
Oh, mine, sorry, it took my very minute.
So, we, they need to make a motion that we, I heard to advertise the ninety, the quote, the two quotes amount, do we need a motion to that?
I don't, I don't.
Can you, or not?
Have to, cause I normally just advertise when it's turned in to the office.
Okay, then we would.
And it's not, right, it's not.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll bring a jamming.
You're awesome. Just real quick while we're on that thought, she has to have that storage room, so that means the voting machines and those wonderful carry-on printers have to be moved. So, Dave and I and Ron have looked, and our only option is to do a room in the annex on the back. That's, that's on the alternative, which would be bare bones essential, it has to be a controlled atmosphere. You can't let them sweat or mold and all that, so that rules the basement out, which is a catch-all anyway.
Can't go to our bare ground storage, no, it would be, it would be.
And even in that back room, as it is right now, I have stuff over there, you can see daylight through the mortar on the building, and it's, it's not very.
Yes, you can.
So, this, this is to close on the right-hand side where the ramp is, I think it figures it's twenty-four by twenty or something, but anyway, it's a plenty big enough room. And put the shelves all around with the voting machines, printers, cause we're gonna have ninety-eight of them at one time, the printers for each machine.
Mm-hmm, yeah, each machine.
So, that will be coming, and just put a drop ceiling, insulate, steel entrance door, so you've got three doors to get in the building, and then another door, just so that should cover double lock and key state board accounts. And our thought is to tap it off the existing heat and AC, cause it's just gotta be controlled, it doesn't have to be sixty in the summer and ninety in the winter, so. That's our intent, so.
Or we would be better off using one of those, like Mitsubishi, you know, it's like what's over there, it's just self-contained.
I'm getting quotes on the skirt unit, you know, cause time you do all that, and then there's two units, two AC and heat units in that building right now, but working to see how much it will pull or put a, you know, toll on the other one, go stress it, so, yeah, you're right, it may be just.
Do you have a square figure you're looking at?
Well, one of them's fourteen by twenty-four, that's three thirty-six, and the other's twenty-four by twenty, which would be four, forty, something like that.
Have you thought about those, uh, combination heating and air conditioning window units?
Well, you would want windows in there though.
No.
You wouldn't want that, you wouldn't.
It would be an outside wall, I know, it's like, hotel.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Hotel unit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that really?
Cause they, they're quite a bit cheaper.
Oh, yeah.
Is that size?
Other than you gotta run two-twenty to them, it's gotta do that name.
Yeah, two-twenty, and that lowers the price of operating.
The size of the room, do they, do they need to get in there to those machines or anything at all at any time, like they go to the Health Department?
I know when they come up to my office, like this closet that they use to store them, it's a good-sized closet, but they also utilize my classroom.
That's what I think.
To, to appropriate them all, which is about the size of this room, that, I.
The thought process was, process was, put all the machines around the walls and the printers.
And then you have a set in set, okay.
Table in the center, and you take your machine off, you load it, you put it back up, and you're done with it.
Okay, so they, then, cause I think. I just wanna be sure they have enough room, because I knew that over there.
Cause they don't have that kind of room in the closet up there, they don't have room working, and then they carry it out to the other room.
Right, they carry it out into.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, but I would just think it, cause they have to test those, and they have, they have to go in and do those things, you know, before like.
This way, it would all be right there.
Just out of curiosity, is this on the side where our stuff is, or is it on the opposite side?
We looked at both.
Okay.
And most of the contractors think it's better to go on the side where the ramp is.
Okay, so where all of our stuff is.
Cause it's sealed better, you don't have to do, put LBLs to shore it up and all that.
The, the drainage. So, what do I do with my stuff?
Our intent was.
I'm so sorry, I told you it was like Tetris.
Our intent was to put it on the outside walls, where it'd still be accessible to you, but you still gotta go out there to get to it, so.
Okay.
And that ground, is it drained, drainage okay?
Yeah, it's probably, there's probably a twelve-inch step there in there where you go out in the alley.
Think so, think so, yeah.
And our thought was, if we go that side, we'll put a crash bar back on that door, cause we'll have to have another egress too and all that, so. And it would be handy to pull up there, your car, truck, whatever, and unhold the machine right in there, so.
That, that was the other thing I was thinking.
The door doesn't always open, it just doesn't, so one of our girls had to kick it.
Oh, it needs a dress.
I'm just saying, that doesn't sound good.
I think it's got a deadbolt or something on it, so. But I just wanted to bring y'all up to speed, so.
Okay, and then, and then you'll bring back your, what, quotes and everything on that, you know, I, I don't know.
And I impressed on them, it's gotta be done by the end of this month.
It's gonna be the first.
Yeah, before March, and most of them said, two weeks in there, they'll probably get locked out. So, cross the fingers.
Well, it's, I'm just thinking, you know, this, the amount of money, if we know anywhere on a thing, is that something we can take from the rainy day fund? You know, so that we know that it can be paid for, you know, cause we don't have to, we don't have to advertise, we don't have to do anything.
We don't have to advertise for rainy day.
Take it from, from courthouse.
Well, we can take it from courthouse either way, you know, you don't have to advertise, do you have to advertise the Coombe Courthouse? We have to advertise the Coombe Courthouse, is that what you're saying?
Right, but I'm just saying, I think that's where it makes the most sense to come from, since it's a structural.
Right.
But if they're needing it, I'm wondering if we, if we went ahead and with the rainy day fund and then, and then advertised it, and, and reimbursed that, and reimbursed. Uh, cause he's saying they've got to do it before she can get it any farther on the other stuff.
What do you think?
But both, I can, I can advertise for both next month, and then think if both take off at the same.
Do you think realistically they'll get on it in two weeks?
I'm supposed to have the bid by Thursday.
Well, if so, then they can do it that way.
Yeah, yeah, that would be the best.
If they gotta get moved by a certain date, they have to stay there for past.
End of March, once they do the loading and stuff and the, that can't be touched after that, right?
Oh, I don't know.
There is a date.
There is a date, they're saying, yes, they have to be moved, or they can't be moved for.
Is that what you're saying?
In the morning.
They can't be moved in a while, yes, they have to stay.
Yes, you're right.
Which is gonna push me way back, but, I mean, if it is, it has to work around.
So. You know.
We can reimburse funds, I've seen that.
That, that was, that's my worry, because I'm thinking this has got to be done out there and throw a tarot room.
What's your ballpark estimate?
It'll be fine, you have an estimate, you have an estimate.
I'm gonna say probably thirty-five, forty to do everything, the insulation, the studs, the.
And we got a line item.
And if it's less.
We've got fifty thousand in general repairs, yeah, in Coombe Courthouse, and we also have, we also have fifteen thousand in wall repair.
But, but have we already?
So, I mean, they're, we could essentially use those funds.
To get started, and then in March, we would have all the money appropriated for the entire.
To reimburse from Coombe Courthouse.
I was thinking about that, too. Bobby, have you looked, have three people looked at it? Okay.
I got a third one coming in tomorrow.
Okay, good, that was, that, that was, that was my, that was, we need bids, you know, and that, so you're thinking that we could, got the money there.
I've actually got two in hand, but I really can't say, you know.
Right.
I understand.
Um, tomorrow, have Sarah email me the high amount of one, and then I will advertise that figure so that we can move forward.
And it can be reimbursed back if we, if they need this.
Because I have a balance.
Without us doing anything.
Right.
Right, and then, and then it can be reimbursed, so the money is there.
We got a little short of general repairs, it's forty-five, forty-seven.
General repairs is fifty, well, I don't know what the balance is right now, but it's fifty.
I think we've spent like twelve thousand, whenever I pulled it up.
Yeah, cause we did it.
It's thirty-eight.
So, so we're okay with it.
We got it all figured out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Crystal clear.
We'll get her done.
All right. Sheriff Thomas, you've been sitting there the longest?
I'm just here to, uh, answer any questions you have, I have no business.
You know, right, our question is, how many do you have?
I always come with that number.
I know.
I have a hundred and fifty in house, thirty-eight out.
How many Julie's?
We send them what jumps in.
Um, have you had any issues with, um, COVID being a problem any recently, cause I know you did a little while back, but it's still ongoing.
But it's.
We had, no, no.
No.
We opened the jail back up currently.
Non-issue.
It's a non-issue.
Good.
Both for the jail and my employees.
Awesome.
Awesome, great.
Do we wanna discuss what Sheriff Thomas proposed last month, we're gonna have some discussion on that, maybe next meeting, or?
Well, hopefully for next meeting, I'm going to have the, um, assessment by the ISA's jail expert. Uh, we're, we're at the end, I think we had a discussion with him the other day, just to clarify some things, where he can put things in perspective, and so I should, well, yeah, by next meeting, I should have that and the total operating cost estimated for the new jail to bring before you, so. That would probably be a good time to talk about it, I would think.
Do you want me to put you on the agenda for next time?
Yes, please.
Okay.
But I'll be here anyways.
He don't have to be on the agenda.
I want some agendas. But anything else? Uh, just for, uh, your information, uh, Dodge Chrysler Corporation has decided that they're going to suspend any manufacturer of police vehicles, as of about a week ago. Ford Motor has decided they're going to suspend current operations of developing police vehicles, mainly because they're having trouble finding a ship. So, Heather had said something about us looking to buy cars, and, um.
It was an example, but.
Well, thank you. So, I am ordering, and I'll bring this before you guys, Thursday, uh, two cars. I've had, I'm gonna have to go to South Carolina to get them, cause there's just nothing here. The northern part of the East Coast, for some reason, are not doing vehicles. The, the company that we're going through in South Carolina, when we called us today just to get an update, told us prior day, we'd sold nine. So, being that there's a limitation, I'm gonna go ahead and purchase them and bring them up here, and then we can piece, cause they're, they're actually a, the motor train and all that is, is, is law enforcement grade, but there's no lights, no sirens, any radios, anything, so that's a side item we have to put in. But I have a storage place to put them, and I can adapt them as we go. I'm probably not gonna really need them for probably September, so we have time for me to find the money, because we bought one truck, the truck is thirty-seven thousand, something, and then the car, the SUV, is thirty-six thousand, something. I, I, I like to buy at least one truck when we buy one, cause I have guys that, though they're not required, carry chainsaws, ropes, all those things to help out county highway during bad weather, so.
And they do it, too.
Plus, I've had two vehicles that blew engines in the last two weeks. One, they're saying was a malfunction, it was just a bad, coming from the pistons, coming from the, the, uh, well, coming from, I think that was a Dodge, coming from Dodge or Chrysler Corporation, which is under warranty, so they're fixing that. Uh, fortunately, the other one, the local person, I'm not gonna say the company, was servicing our car, forgot to put oil in it, took it out and blew the engine in it to test drive.
They're buying us a new one, right?
Huh?
They're buying us a new one, right?
I would hope so.
Yes, they're buying us a new one, so, given how that works out, we'll see, but that's where we're at with vehicles, right?
Just curious, so John Jones, their police, are they wiped out inventory, or no?
Not totally wiped out.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure, you know, if we're gonna go all the way south.
John, John Jones, John Jones, once this started, uh, automatically upped the price of his on-what police vehicles, five thousand dollars. That was from the start. My first year, Sheriff John Jones actually tried to cheat our department, so I'm gonna be hard-pressed to buy anything from John Jones, if I can find him somewhere else. If you'll give me a good price, that's reasonable to everybody else, I'll go with him. We've gone over there and looked, but actually, I think we were, he told us, he was under order for a thousand vehicles, cause they've almost wiped all his lots clean too, and he's the fourth largest provider of police vehicles in the United States. So, that, for some reason, it's north, south, you can go find them, but, you know, but you gotta get them up here, so, that's where we're at with cars. Couple of little things. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll see you guys.
Sheriff Riber, you have anything?
Sure, I talked last month about some funds for, um, updating the ordinances, and then for contract IT services, so I have specific amounts. Um, so for the updating the ordinances, there's fifty thousand dollars in the line item, and the total is seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and sixteen, so that will, make sure they're all up to Indiana State Code, um, clean up all the amendments that have been made over the year and integrate them into the total, get them to a much more usable fashion than the, I think this, the subdivision one's like two hundred pages and, so. Getting those up to date, we're also gonna look at combining them into one, uh, so to make them a little more user-friendly for folks. Uh, we sent out RFPs, but only got one bid back, but they're the same ones that did the comprehensive thing, so, that's, uh, Coombe Courthouse. Sorry, that's lit, it's the wrong one. And it's, do you have the number, you want the number?
Fun one-one.
Two, zero-zero-one, zero-one, zero-two, zero-zero.
One-two?
Anyway, uh, the other one is for IT, uh, contract IT services, that is Coombe Courthouse. And so we need another seventeen thousand, five hundred, that comes, and, cause Andrew's services are in there, they're gonna keep him on to start with, but Ovation is gonna pick it up. Just because of the timing, we are going to, um, for next year, have a, our, RFP and get people to put in bids, but because they've come in and looked over it, they've given us quotes on what, how to update our servers, how to do some infrastructure help that we need right, right away. Talked to Pat, he said we can do it since it's a service contract.
So, seventeen thousand, five hundred additional for the computer, and then for the ordinance, I need an additional twenty-four.
Nine sixty.
Twenty-one, nine sixty, thank you.
So.
And additional, the computer that come out of the, can import us the contract IT services, we have like a hundred grand total budget there.
Contract IT services, yeah, yeah. So, their total is gonna be eighty, eighty-five, I think, for the year, and we may have a little bit left over since when I get it started in January. They've come up and done an assessment, told us, I'm gonna say it out loud, told us we're on the thin edge. I think we know that, so, but that's gonna help us get off the thin edge, and. Any questions?
Yep. Last month, we, we asked about, uh, um, the general contractor at the jail, if he's giving local, uh, contractors a, a chance to bid on different things. Did you get a chance to talk to him?
No, I didn't, sorry. Yeah, I've seen the name of some of the local guys out there working, so I know there are some, I'm not sure exactly how he's.
And I know that when that all was happening, local people were contacting my office, and I was giving them Sarah's information, and Sarah was giving them the information to. and I was giving them Sarah's information, and Sarah was giving them the information to bid on things. I don't know specifically about which jobs, but I know that we were getting those calls from time to time.
Let's see which ones we've gotten so far, and then, but, and then ask how, what the process is, so we can put that out so people know.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's all, thanks.
Guess the next one, we have the COOM rate adjustment?
So we keep saying we want to do this, but I need to know actual numbers to advertise, to get this ball rolling on that. Um, I kind of, so the idea, I didn't know if you guys wanted to keep all of the COOM rates within COOM funds. I talked, I just, um, received notice that Wayne is no longer my DLGF rep, so now I have a new person, his name is George. Um, so George said, because I asked, can, because it was asked of me, can we put that additional amount to County General? And he said, the process would actually, if we decreased a COOM fund, we did not increase another COOM fund to cover the amount, it would go to the levy, and then when we actually advertise our budget, then we can kind of play around with those rates that go into each of the funds that the LGF budgets. So he said the answer is yes, but you kind of have to watch how you advertise the next year, make sure you advertise high enough to move that rate over. So there's not a clear cut, move to County General, or move.
But that's the way we've been doing it though, kind of.
Well, we've been doing the loan, but to actually move the.
If you move them, COOM.
Just change the rate.
They're changing the rate, it would change the rate, but not the state.
Right, which it wouldn't change the total tax rate.
No, it would stay, that all would stay the same.
Right, it's just rearranging where it would go. But I need to know if you guys wanted to keep everything, if you wanted to take County General, or not County General, if you want to take COOM courthouse to half of what we're receiving right now? If we would like to put all of that in COOM jail, or if we want to leave that for the levy, or if we want to add to COOM cap development?
If you, if you left it, if you left it to go to the general, then it could be used.
We just always have to be sure to advertise high enough to use our whole levy.
It wouldn't necessarily have to be. High enough all the time. Whole amount.
Because if not, we would be going backwards a lot.
We, yes, we would be going backwards on that. The other thing is if you, I, I feel like we have, need to take half of what we're going into COOM courthouse right now, half of what that amount is, and put it somewhere. Because there's such an amount going in, right, Chris? I mean, you know, and we, and we are so overtake that, and yeah.
And get it down.
We need, we need to get it down.
You can pull it back just a hair, but I ran the numbers on the percentages, and you pull it back too far and it curved out pretty quick. So we can adjust it fractional.
Yes.
And I can, I can put those numbers together and send you out a comparison, because I just kind of threw the different percentages in to watch, based on expenditures from those accounts over the last five years, to graph it. And it's, it's a fine line, if you pull the percentage down too much, it just goes this way.
It'll, it'll, it'll drop off too much, it'll, yeah. We're using COOM courthouse right now a great deal, and then the other thing of it is, we've been using COOM courthouse to.
Loan.
Uh, we took loan ourselves money and everything, so we want to keep that in mind too, you know, because then if you do that, and we still have to use COOM courthouse, then you're going to come on down with them.
Right, theoretically, what should happen in the course of about four years is we should get out of doing the loans altogether.
All together, exactly.
Because we've done, we've dropped.
We've done them a year, for the last three years.
Right.
Oh, yeah, it's been at least half of what we started.
Exactly, exactly.
And it may be less than that, but that's just a.
So do we want to? Do you have anything today?
I just, I have to start the advertising process soon, so I don't think that you guys have to start, or have to do a motion. I just need to know what you guys want me to advertise for you guys to potentially vote on. I have the templates already ready from the state, I just need the numbers to put in.
It has to be done by the end of next month, so.
So it has to be done by April thirtieth, but we have to have a public hearing, which I'm hoping we can incorporate in our March meeting. But I have to advertise it two different times, at least ten days apart, at least ten days before.
So we don't need Christmas figures before, I see how much we actually drop that.
Right, so we're really at that point right now that unless we want to have an extra meeting in April, we need to know those numbers and get moving.
I was gonna say, if this, we might have to get to that extra meeting in April, just for the simple fact that, that, uh, to be sure that we get this done, because if it's not done in time, then we've lost it for another whole year.
Right, for a whole nother year, because this will change the rates for twenty-three's budget.
Budget, exactly, exactly. You know.
What do we have to do then?
You know, that direction. Are you thinking, Chris, less, not as much as a half, take a half, are you thinking?
Well, you could, yeah, you definitely can not get down that, that harsh.
Okay.
Um, I mean, you could, I think, I think it ended up going, it's, it's point oh-two now.
Yes.
And I think I ended up around point oh-one-four, so take a point oh, uh, point oh-six.
Point, point oh-six, so.
And then shifting that into splitting that amount between a slight bump to bridge and us, and the rest of going to jail.
Just a slight to bridge.
Yeah, just a slight, because we were right on the test.
Right, so we, on bridge is, I've had to cut.
Cut.
That budget, and I think we actually have to do it the last two years. And he has federal aid projects right now going into place that will be heavy budget items next year.
So if we did that, then we put it, just would move it to the two COOMs.
And then not adjust the levy.
And not just at level, level, like, level it off.
Right.
I think that, I would much rather do that, I would much rather do it to the two COOMs and leave the general alone.
Right, I think knowing more about this, this cycle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, advertising will help, I think we can play with the numbers a little better for County General.
And when you say two, you're still referencing Cambridge and CUM courthouse.
Yes, yeah.
Putting not.
From COOM.
No, no, just those two, that's what he's, but those are the two that needs at COOM jail.
Courthouse to COOM.
Down the road, we're gonna.
The other, yeah. Jail and Bridge.
Yeah, but both of those were the ones that had to be cut, we had to cut this year.
Let's do that then.
Yeah, I, yeah, we can, if you want to.
All right, until I have the numbers in place?
That, the, the, I think we need to make a motion where the, that are going to be located.
Yes.
Not necessarily the amount, not at the moment, but the, what, you know, so I, I'll, I'll move that, we put them in.
COOM.
COOM, uh, courthouse and COOM bridge.
Courthouse. Yes.
And then, and with the, with the decision on, that's exactly, if you run the figures.
No, it'd be.
Coming from COOM.
Courthouse going to Bridge and Jail.
To Bridge and Jail.
Jail, COOM, yes, Bridge and Jail, we're correct.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Everybody approve?
And then when we see your figures, then we will know what, and, uh.
And we can do that next month.
Yes, can we do that next month, or do you need that ahead of time, because is that something that?
I think I can start the advertising process as soon as I get those figures, I'm all touch-based with George again. Um, then it normally takes a couple of days to get it in the paper, and then I have to advertise, and then ten days advertise and.
Should we goodbye our April meeting?
Yeah, we should be goodbye our even meeting if we have this.
You should be, and if we have to have a second meeting in April, yeah, but I don't think we'll have to, if you can get it advertised.
Yeah.
You get, you get it advertised, yeah. But do we have to vote, but, uh, my question is, do we have to vote on the, the amount?
There will be a, um, resolution that you'll have to adopt at that meeting to do that.
At, okay, at the March, at the March meeting then, for you to advertise it.
And then the resolution will have those rates in there.
Okay, okay, that would be good.
I mean, if you need Andrew Lamb, since he's in contact with some other things for us to balance, because he had mentioned those, change in the COOM rates, if you want to bounce any ideas off him, like send you his contact information.
Sure, good idea.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send him what I'm thinking, because just to give you an idea, um, the let's see, COOM Bridge, um, was kind of penballing between two and a half and two point seven, and then in twenty-twenty, it dropped from two point seven to two point two.
Right.
Um, and then the COOM cap development, it's, it's been slightly inching down, but it's good where it's at. It'll hold, uh, COOM courthouse, um, you know, five years ago was at two point five, and to the, and at the end of twenty, it was at three million.
Right.
So we can adjust that one down, as we talked about, and then COOM jail was at four hundred and fifty-two thousand and sixteen, but down to three sixty-three and twenty, so by building it up a little bit, building the bridge up, it'll.
Realistically, with all their new contracts, they will have, they'll need the money and that.
Yes, yes, they will.
Yeah, no, especially prepping for the new jail, uh, that way we can go ahead and shore it up where we're not fighting it.
I know there were some operating expenses and the financing for the new jail, so there is some funds there currently that were, that's coming in from the, and they did the financials, so it's not, shouldn't catch you off-guard and.
Right.
So you've got some stuff there that's coming in.
Yeah, but if we put them in those two, that'd be, that'd be ideal.
Sure, sure isn't.
Because of the anxiety.
Yeah, but we just want to make sure we have time, so we don't lose that.
Because you've been audited and all that, it's a little chaotic.
And I thank you for the work that you had to do with some of this.
Yeah, and thanks to Heather for putting together the five-year summary for me to look at.
Oh, yeah, that was great, that was great.
Problem.
Yeah.
Okay, transfers and additionals. From the Health Department, one-one-five-nine, and these are all additionals.
These are, these are not budgeted, that was what she talked about from the grant.
This was grant.
Money, money had to be put in these, these funds, as funds.
And she discussed that, I think, in November, maybe, the COOM positions.
Yeah, he was back in phase, yeah.
Fund zero-one-one-four, COVID protocols, thirty-three thousand, fifty-seven dollars. Fund zero-one-seven-four, insurance, nine thousand dollars. Fund one-seven-two, zero-one-seven-two, perf, four thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars. And fund zero-one-seven-one, social security, two thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars.
And this is for her new, uh, nurse.
Well, the COVID clerical position.
The COVID, yeah, the, the, yes.
It's gonna help track, I think, with the schools.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'm gonna lose your job, and I'm hopeful we don't have that position very long.
Do you want me to talk about this one?
Yeah, you might, I, I.
Yeah. So this one is, this one is the Board of Tourism's budget. Um, they, the board themselves had approved this at the end of last year. Um, this is the final step for them to actually write the check to us, and us have the money in-house, which State Board of Accounts is so very happy about. And kind of uniform the whole process, so, um, this is just approving the line items that they had approved at their budget, and then it's in form of a resolution, um, so that I can actually upload that to Gateway and get that approved adding to our budget, so it would be Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-three. It's in the total of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Make the motion, we approve it. You got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
And the resolution is the one with the pink form, or pink sticky, yeah, just in that round. So I can include first name and last name. State Board of Accounts has been doing a lot of auditing with that as part of our audit, um, so they, um, were very happy that we were going to streamline that and actually have all of, um, their funds under our accounting system, so they can see that and how it works.
Anyone have anything else?
The only thing I would share real quick is, um, Devin Sharp, our chief PD. As I think everybody is aware, um, he's been working closely with Heather, thank you for all your great help. I just sit on that board to, um, separate the PD funds, it's been a little, not gray in the two judges' budget, but we knew if it had its own standalone budget, that it would be a lot easier for all parties involved, and he wanted to kind of pass that through the board to review and give any feedback, and then I believe he's planning to come next month, in case anybody has any questions, I'll verify that. Um, I will tell you some good news, um, from my last, my, my meeting just recently, last week. Um, not only, of course, as you guys know, one of sixty-seven counties participating in the, the state reimbursement program, the forty percent, but he actually wrote and got a grant, or we're now getting sixty percent reimbursement for all CHENS and TPR cases. Um, and not only that, it's a great easy grant, like, our normal reporting that he does is, um, no additional reporting, he even needed, everything that he's already turning in meets all the requirements for this grant. Um, so that, and we're, um, in compliance, I think we're through only three total appeals in twenty-twenty-one. The fact that we're staying in compliance, you know, helps sustain budget, um, so he's doing a great job. I just wanted to give him kudos, and, um, if you see him next month, that's why, I'll verify if he does want to come.
Um, that, I think we have been under budgeting a couple of those line items, um, knowing that the money was coming back in and maybe not budgeting it, and then at the end of the year, I was cleaning it up with the cleanup process. So with it being in its own separate fund, we might look at a way to maybe appropriate that money there, maybe not even as a true additional, just after we pay some other bills, if there's money available to move it there, so that it's more clear-cut, and then next year, that's why those line items will be, um, a little larger whenever he comes and requests those.
And I don't feel like we're behind in the current process, obviously, and Bobby and I and Jason Patterson, it just went off the board. We worked really hard in a short period, just to get this chief position created, and there was an advantage of kind of changing the, the PD to chief, uh, more of a PD office, and, and all of this just happened fast, and Devin's hit the ground running, and it's kind of like, wow, should we wait till next year and think about separating it in next year's budget? And it was like, no, 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 we, yeah, we need to move forward now.
Right, where we, and we were in the position to just transfer it, and I think everything will be good. We might just have to add some to it a little later in the year.
Could you mention how much this audit is going to cost us?
So, um, it is a federal audit, because just about everyone had to have a federal audit because of all of the CARES money that went out to everyone. And when they are doing the CARES portion of the audit, it is, uh, just over eight hundred dollars a day, when they're doing the federal part, they said hopefully it'll be, um, only two weeks on that segment.
That's per day or per hour?
Per day.
Per day, the eight hundred dollars per day, and then, um.
The other, the hundred and somethings.
And the others are a hundred dollars per, and I think that's per auditor.
Per auditor, per day, per hour, yeah.
So, um, per auditor per day is a hundred dollars a day.
Six and four hundred dollars a day, something like that.
I think so, it's pretty close.
It runs, it runs fairly expensive for us.
So right now, we have, um, three, three auditors, and there's someone there training another one, so I'm assuming actually four auditors.
She means the train one shouldn't have.
Yeah.
I'm trying to find us more money, I think, you know, but no, I understand.
Do we use ARP money to pay for the audit?
Um, no, so we, I think it's by statute that we pay everything.
We have to pay that, we have to pay that.
Unappropriated from County General, and pay ourselves out.
I know, it's, it's, it's.
Uh, settle my time.
I know, but, yeah, but they said they would not be here too long.
So they have a federal, uh, deadline of March thirty-first to get all of their auditions. So they have a federal, uh, deadline of March thirty first to get all of their audits turned in. So they are hoping by March first, they are done with Jefferson County.
So we get the short month.
Yeah, we got the short month, yeah.
We're just
Yeah.
Two, two dust days, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a savings.
We're just really busy. And it is a little cheaper than what it normally is because they're only in office, um, two days a week and everything else is done remotely still.
Yeah, that's what they said, yeah. And you said they're in the treasurer's office right now, working.
Mm-hmm. And they said that will be, so since we received, um, the ARPA money, will be audited again, probably annually now, as long as we have that federal money.
Any, anything else? Or she's a juror?
I'm good.